Okay, then I'm gonna call to order the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting town of Simsbury. Today is Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, and the time is 7:02. After the call to order, we typically recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'm gonna share my screen. Everybody see the flag? Okay, if anyone could rise and please recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Thank you, everyone. And I can stop sharing now, see everybody's wonderful visage. Good, next roll call, let's see who we have here. Okay, Holly Bem. Present but muted, I thought I saw her. Okay, she's not here right now, okay, David Blooming.
Present.
Aaron Levitt Smith.
Here.
Greg McCormack. Alan Needham.
Here.
William Rice, present. Richard Cortez is absent. Julie Eaton.
Present.
Sean Glenn. Absent, I'm gonna go back to Holly Bem.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, I had to switch computers.
It's good, I can see the top of your head and the pipe running across the top of the room.
That's okay, because I have a bad case of poison ivy.
Okay, alright.
I was totally covered, but when I pulled it out of the ground, the vine hit me. So you'll, I'll move my, I'll move it if I can find myself here.
Okay. So let's see, we have one, two, three, four, five regular members. Julie, I'd like to promote you to a regular member tonight.
Okay, thanks.
That gives us, that gives us a full slate, excellent. Okay, so Mike, I'm gonna be a little renegade here, I suspect that several of the people that are with us tonight may wanna say something, or you know, is this related to something on the agenda?
So you have representatives from Griffin Land here, you have representatives from the Trust for Public Lands, so they will be speaking directly to the items of the agenda later.
Okay, well, we have two sets of minutes to go through, so I make a motion that we take item number three, approval of minutes, and move that to well, after the discussion on the referral and the preliminary discussion for Meadowwood. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Dave.
Even though my name, even though the square says Mary.
Yeah, I see that.
You sound like a Dave and not a Mary.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of moving the review and approval minutes to later on in the agenda, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously, thanks, everybody. Okay, so I hope I didn't catch our guest by surprise by moving you up in the agenda, but I know everyone's time is precious. So, item number four on our, on our agenda is entitled Referrals from the Board of Selectmen, Potential Open Space Acquisition at the Meadowwood Site. Mike, should we take this one first?
Yeah, why don't we do the item first, I'll pull up the presentation that Trust for Public Lands has prepared. And maybe also introduce, I think, Honor Waller is here tonight from the Trust for Public Lands.
Yes.
If you wanna say hi.
Hi, I'm Honor, I'm a project manager with the Trust for Public Land, and I will be presenting about this Meadowwood Conservation Purchase opportunity to, to the Planning Commission tonight. So, Mike, are you dictating the slides or controlling them?
I'm controlling the slides for you.
Okay, great, thank you. So, the Trust for Public Land is a nonprofit conservation organization, our mission is land for people, so the, the long version of that is we create parks and protect open space for generations to come. We were founded in 1972, in, out of California, we sort of a offshoot of the nature conservancy with our mission sort of more focused on connecting, you know, people in the cities and the suburbs with open space and wild lands, rather than protecting these, you know, large swaths of land up in Alaska, and, and so so we became a separate organization, we've been in Connecticut since 1986, I work out of the New Haven office doing land conservation throughout the state. As of yesterday, we've protected 93 properties, 7,600 acres across the state of Connecticut, and over $150 million in fair market value that, you know, of land purchased for communities and for the benefit of, you know, the state of Connecticut. We have done a couple of projects in, in Simsbury, many of you are probably familiar with the Ethel Walker School, the property we protected in partnership with the town there, and we also did a piece in what they, I believe you guys call the Simsbury Meadows, so there, there may be one or two others, but they were before my time, and, but anyway, that's sort of a, the brief history of our organization here in in Connecticut and, and this town, next slide.
So, I'll, I'll provide the update on this one for the group.
Thanks, Mike.
The pro, the project we're talking, we're discussing tonight, it was the Meadowwood Residential Subdivision. And if everyone recall, I don't, don't know, was anyone on the Planning Commission when this came out of court in 2008?
No, I was not.
No. Okay, so it was, it was an affordable housing application called for the construction of 296 residence, single-family residential homes, 88 were supposed to be deed restricted units. The approvals are valid through March 20th, 2022. The landowner, you know, as part of it, we, there was some open space purchases that were made mainly the triangle on Firetown, Barn Door Hills, Holcomb Street. On the next slide. As part of the court settlement, there was some environmental cleanup that had to occur as a result of historical land uses. These actions have been completed. You know, there are some of the actions such as there was some mixing of soils that had to occur, there was this excavation area that's hashed and blue on this map. All of which, as I said earlier, those were, those actions were completed in 2014, I think was when we, the excavation was completed. As part of this purchase, the town is performing their due diligence and having a licensed environmental professional review the files and inspect, it's, we're just doing that as, you know, as as a responsible landowner, it's not that we don't think that the work has been completed to the satisfaction of the state, it's just part of our due diligence as this purchase occurs. And then I'll turn the rest of the presentation over to Honor unless anyone has any questions.
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
So, the Meadowwood Conservation Project came about after some discussions with the landowner, Griffin Industrial, or their subsidiary, I think it's a technical owner, but the, the Trust for Public Lands vision here in, you know, in partnership with the town is to protect this entire piece that's, that you hopefully all see in orange, it's, it's roughly 288 acres as some type of conservation outcome, so some of it might be leased farmland protected with a conservation easement, some of it will hopefully have trails and, and be more of a trail network that connects to McLean and Massaco State Forest. There may be some areas reserved for future athletic fields if, if the town feels like that need is, is relevant. And then there, there's a historic component to this, this property as well, and so right now, we're sort of figuring all of that stuff out with, through grants and with the state agencies and with the town and coming to the various commissions to make sure that this is a viable conservation project that we can fund and that, so that the Trust for Public Land can, can buy it and turn it over to the town of Simsbury for open space, next slide. So, some of the things that sort of caught our attention that the Trust for Public Land, you know, our mission is very focused on connecting people with the land, and this property has some incredible historic resources on it, it was the farm where Martin Luther King Jr. lived and worked during his two summers in Simsbury. I think, you know, it's, it's thought that he was likely spent most of his time in the commissary and in the dormitory that is now demolished, but it's likely that he possibly worked in these fields and, you know, many other influential people involved in the American Civil Rights Movement as well, so that, you know, simultaneously to the Trust for Public Land trying to purchase this for open space and create this conservation outcome, the State Historic Preservation Office is very interested in putting this on the National Register of Historic Places for its significance in the American Civil Rights Movement. And so we find that very compelling as a place that, you know, future generations can reflect and connect with, you know, their, part of their history. The, the trails aspect is obviously very important to us, this, this is a big connector piece between McLean and Massaco, and the idea that we could, you know, create more trails for the community is, is very compelling. The soils are really great, so that sort of ties into a potential to keep using some of this land as active farmland. And I'll get sort of more into the, you know, sort of outline of, of where that would be later on in the, in the presentation. There's an area that's reserved for the future needs for athletic fields, which it came sort of after this, these conversations started going with the town manager and the, the Parks and Rec and Culture Department, we, we realized that there was sort of this future need for athletic fields, and there's really a scarcity of flat flat land that lends itself to, to that use, and so reserving some of that land for future needs sort of became a priority for, for the town in, in this planning process, and so we've reserved about 25 acres for that. And then the historic tobacco barns sort of lend this, I think scenic and important sort of relic of the agricultural past of Simsbury that I think a lot of people are attached to and enjoy seeing, and so we wanna preserve that and actually restore some of those barns to, you know, more stable condition as they will serve as sort of the interpretive element to the Martin Luther King Jr. story once Historic Preservation Office is involved, next slide. So, TPL now holds a contract with Griffin to purchase the property. It's fully permitted for 296 units, single-family cluster housing, and you know, essentially, they could develop it tomorrow if they wanted to, and we, they have granted us the option to buy this, and they've given us you know, about a year with the possibility of an extension to do so, so we, we are trying to line everything up and go to all the commissions in the town and work with the state agencies and get this all done before February, and if not February, before July, so that we can realize this conservation outcome. And sort of the last part of this, Griffin was, you know, sort of generous enough to give us this really long contract, and, you know, they have permits that have, you know, sort of a, an expiration date on them, and part of what we wanna make sure that if, you know, a conservation deal is to be had, then I think that's, everybody's on the same page that that's the priority, that's what we're going for, but we also don't wanna, you know, put them in the position where they can't, you know, exercise their, their other business opportunities if, if our deal is to fall apart, and so you know, as you can see, we're there's a, a permit renewal option that TPL is supporting in, as part of this process. Next slide. So, I, I sort of already went out over this, but 138 acres would be dedicated to open space with a DEP easement, and that just requires public access, it wants to ensure that the, the wildlife and the habitat is conserved, and that would be acquired, that would happen through an open space and watershed land acquisition grant, which the town has actually had many, many over the course of the grant's lifetime. Many have gone towards, I think one was Ethel Walker and Simsbury Meadows and the George Hall Farm, and so we would be pursuing that, that funding source to, to help pay for the open space component, along with some other funding sources which I'll go over on the next slide. There's 24 acres for future athletic fields, 117 acres for preserved farmland, and then there's sort of these small carve-outs of the historic and interpretive part of the property that would sort of be dedicated to the American Civil Rights Movement and Martin Luther King's history here. So, as you can see, you know, it's, it's very connected to the existing open space, it's, you know, it lends itself to, to being a really great conservation project because of the history and you know, for, in terms of the soils, they, on the farmland component, they're, they're excellent, the State Department of Agriculture is interested, and so we're sort of putting together all these different pieces to, to come to our, our purchase price here, next slide. So this is, it's still tentative, but this is our capital funding model, so we'd be seeking about 2.2 million from the town of Simsbury, just a little less, you know, somewhere around 800,000 from the Open Space Program, 600,000 from the Highlands Conservation Act, which is a congressional source of funding that flows through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that funds properties and projects within the Highlands region of New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Connecticut. And Simsbury is sort of the last town on the edge of that Highlands region. The state was already granted $280,000 from the George Dudley Seymour Trust, which is a, a fund that funds compelling projects put forth by the state. And one, roughly 1.5 million from Connecticut Department of Agriculture for that agricultural easement, $500,000 from the State Historic Preservation Office, and then $150,000 from the sale of the private lot that Griffin already has an option on Holcomb Street. And so that's our, that brings us to 6 million, and then TPL has a lot more to raise to cover project costs associated with this deal, you know, appraisals and surveys and staff time and everything, you know, title closing. So, you name it, they, they add up really quickly on a project of this scale, applying for, you know, seven or eight grants is extremely time consuming. And, you know, there's, there's also this sort of program reinvestment, so we, we can't raise money successfully as, as well in, in cities where we wanna do some of our urban work, and so what we do is we build a little bit into the budget in order to sort of fund that work statewide and in a place where there's a bigger opportunity to do some fundraising, like Simsbury and the surrounding region. Next slide. So, these are the action items that we're sort of putting forward to the town, you know, we are looking to allocate roughly 2.2 million towards the land purchase and, and that will go before all of these commissions, land use commissions, and then eventually, you know, go to voters and hopefully later this year, possibly November. We have been working with the town manager and Mike and the first selectman, and we have a technical assistance letter from the town that basically allows the Trust for Public Land to work with the town and work towards grants, and it avoids issues that might be considered lobbying if we didn't have a letter like that. We've developed a memorandum of understanding with TPL and the town that sort of just outlines the rules and responsibilities of, of the partners, and that has been signed. And so now, on item four, we are going to these commissions and asking you to consider, you know, both the purchase and refer it back to the selectmen, and also, you know, consider that the landowner has this right to a future permit renewal should the deal not move forward. And then finally, collaborating with TPL and to due diligence, we are working with Mike and Maria to sort of line up, as Mike spoke to the environmental, line up some of these things on the front end so that, you know, we can ensure that the town is, you know, doing its appropriate due diligence, isn't gonna end up with anything that they don't want. And, last slide? Or was that it?
That's it.
Great.
That's the last slide.
Well, thanks, Mike, I will turn it back over to you to...
Thanks, Honor, can, can I ask a very basic question?
Yes.
If this goes through, who ends up owning the property?
Yes, so, good question. The Trust for Public Land doesn't, it's not in our business model to own property, what we do is we really facilitate these transactions, so we act as sort of the principal, and we secure all the funding, take care of all the due diligence, partner with the town, raise all the money, and at the end of the day, the town of Simsbury is the landowner, and we facilitate that through, you know, sometimes we hold a contract and we direct the deed, sometimes we buy the property and hold it while we secure the funding and then turn it over to the town, but at the end of the day, the town would be the, the fee owner of this property, subject to some conservation easements by different state agencies.
Okay, great, thanks.
I have, I have a couple of questions, thank you for your presentation. So, with, whose idea was it around the idea for the athletic fields, was that the town?
Yeah, yeah, the Parks and Rec, I think, has, has been doing a lot of sort of surveys and things around, you know, what their future needs are, and I think there's very little flat open space left in places where they need athletic fields, and so while, you know, it, it may not be developed ever, it may not be developed for five years, they, they do wanna reserve that flexibility for themselves should the need arise.
And, has, was, has there been any talk around the agricultural part of doing a community garden or some kind of you know, project like that where people could go and use it for agriculture?
Yeah, so, so that, part of the, sort of, the mechanics of that have not been sorted out entirely. I'm just back from attorney leave, and it's on my agenda to sort of start, you know, talking to the town a lot more about what they envisioned for that agricultural portion. You know, whether it's leasing part of it, I mean, 117 acres is, is significant. And, but whether they plan on leasing it to a farmer or, you know, reserving some of those areas near the ball, future ball fields for a community garden space or, you know, a giving garden, you know, those are, those are the kind of conversations that will want some, some public input, I think, the town will want that, and so that they can, you know, decide how, how it's gonna look down the line, but when it comes to the actual putting the deal together, you know, there's nothing in the agricultural easement that precludes, you know, community gardens or, you know, small leases, it's more, you know, what the Trust for Public Land wants to do is protect it, put the easement on it, and then sort of say, okay, town, you know, you have all these citizens, you guys decide what the best way to use this land is.
Yeah, it'd be nice to do, kind of, to hook that up with the pollinator pathways that some people in town are, you know, discussing. One last question, how, I, I saw on one of the maps, you know, McLean is right there, I don't know if it actually technically abuts McLean, so if it doesn't abut McLean, were there any discussions around how to connect this land with the McLean Refuge, or no? Just curious.
So, I, I think it does abut, and I think our map is actually possibly missing a lot or two. I'm not positive on that. But, but yeah, we have met with the McLean Refuge Manager, and he actually gave us a lot of good wildlife data about, you know, what the likely habitat and species are that are using the land, and, and so we definitely, you know, wanna partner in sort of, you know, the, the trail connectivity makes a lot of sense, and so we wanna make sure that, you know, that we explore all those options.
Thank you, and congratulations on your performance.
Thank you.
I have a question or two. The affordable housing that was approved, is that under 8-30G?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, what was that?
That's correct, Alan.
Okay, so it's an 8-30G, okay.
It's my understanding that it was approved under 830G, but I think it, it was there were portions that are reserved for sort of moderate income households, but I think Griffin might be able to speak to that more if necessary.
This is Tim Luskely with Griffin Industrial, can you hear me?
Yeah, sounds good.
Good, good evening, yes, it was approved under 830G as part of a stipulated agreement with the town as an 830G development, so it, it does have a mixture of affordable units, excuse me, dwellings scattered throughout the project.
Okay. So, there's easements involved, so down the road 20, 30, 40 years from now, can the property be used for anything else, for example, if the town got hard up, could they sell the athletic fields?
So, yeah, so anything, so the athletic fields wouldn't be encumbered by an open space easement or an agricultural easement, the, that area would be, you know, sort of, the town has to buy that on its own. Whereas with the easement programs, there's funding from the various state agencies, and so down the line, if that 24 acres, you know, theoretically, the town needed a new firehouse, and they hadn't encumbered that property with any easement, then yes, they could.
Okay, but where easements apply, they, it can't turn into a solar farm, for example.
Right, yeah, that is not a permitted use, because I think that both the DEP and the Department of Agriculture stance is that it, you know, it, it doesn't, it doesn't fall in line with their easement.
The thing that sticks with me for the moment is the 2.2 million, you're gonna hear that a lot, I'm sure. Of course, that comes out of something, it comes out of the town budget somewhere, and that, I think, is something that really needs to be understood, what that would be.
Alan, could I just interject for a second there?
Sure.
That, that money, I believe, was on the Capital Improvement Program budget that we gave a positive referral for.
Okay, then, so that's already done, and the vote would be in November, is that correct?
I think, I think the board has removed that.
I thought they put it off.
Dave, that Dave is correct, they, so the first, the first version of the Capital Improvement Plan had an open space acquisition slot. That was removed by the, or recommended to be removed by the Board of Finance to the Board of Selectmen, so your current budget does not have this acquisition, so what Honor is saying is true. This, this acquisition will, will account for 1% of the town, greater than 1% of the town budget, therefore, subject to a referendum, so the thought is that potentially, should the plans align, in November, this would be a ballot question about spending 2.2 million to purchase the Meadowwood project.
You know, I always think of these things in terms of like a balance sheet, and I don't know how it's done, there's economists that do things that I can't do all the time, but on the one hand, if the property is developed... But on the one hand, if the property is developed with an affordable housing component, then those houses exist, they pay taxes, they tend to send kids to school. School and other town expenses means that whatever we get back in taxes, does it match what we spend in school and other things? I would love to know in rough numbers how this stacks up with us spending 2.2 million dollars now and not getting any more tax revenue from that property for a long time, forever. I just, I don't know how to figure that out. I can't do it. But but I think that's really the core of this. If it costs us 2.2 million and yet that 2.2 million is a good investment because we're not sending all these kids to school, for example, and have other town expenses. Or is it a bad investment? I don't know how you know that until you figure things like that out. You know, I think it is possible, Tim can tell us, that to look at 288 houses and predict how many school kids are liable to come out of there. Isn't it something like one and a half kids per household, something like that? That's the kind of information or at least some educated guesses that I'd like to have about this. Not that you can do it tonight, but that's one of the questions I'll always have.
So Alan, I, we have a team of of conservation economic folks on our staff and they're the people that put those things together. And, you know, they'll they'll sort of, like you said, do the balance sheet, the cost of community service on 296 homes. You know, fire, you know, expanded fire station or, you know, more kids going to school and and sort of do the the sort of cost per acre while as open space versus as a residential development. And I can certainly, you know, ask them to to take a look at this and and come up with something that's, you know, kind of gives us some hard numbers.
You got to factor in the 2.2 million too. I mean,
Right, yeah, certainly.
Because I remember when Meadowwood was a brand new idea, people were talking about we'd have to buy or build an elementary school to accommodate the kids. Of course, that's when the house count was like more than double what we're talking about here. Still, to me, that's valuable information.
Alan, there's, there was a tremendous amount of economic analysis done in 2008 prior to the whole court decision, which reduced the number of of billable houses. So I don't know, I don't know that someone's updated it since then, but there was a significant amount of work done in 2008 in exactly those lines.
So Honor, we're going to see something like that.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
So Alan, what what's the significance i- in your mind? Are you, do you want to understand which one costs the town more or?
In part, yeah. I mean, there's always intangibles, but in part, yes. Okay. I I think you'd have to factor in, do we need more open space? That's not a financial decision, that's a spiritual.
That's where I think this whole discussion is going to get kind of vague. But that's why we, that's why we put it to the townspeople. We let them make the decision with as much information supplied as possible. Maybe some people will look and say, hey, you know, maybe it's better for the long run of the town to have a development going there. Others may say, hey, you know, I don't care, I'll pay extra taxes to have more open space.
That's right, Bill. That's exactly right. But the the facts have to be out there. They have to be presented and understood.
I agree with Alan because once we have that analysis, Honor, then we can provide the town with actionable information to make that decision too. Because a- as Alan pointed out, we don't really know right now. It might be far better to make this investment.
And then again, it's it's the immediate pain of 2.2 million dollars coming out of what department?
I think it's a bonding issue, right? And it would be, it'd be a long term debt sort of thing.
Still got to pay it.
Yeah. I hear you. I hear you.
I do want to, I love the idea of, you know, making this open space, but I I also don't think we can lose the historical value of that piece of land. I think that absolutely should be factored in and sometimes you can't put a price tag on that. And, you know, the fact that these barns are a thing of the past. Martin Luther King Jr., I think if there is an interactive component, like Honor was saying, and do we trump that up to get some tourism in town to come and take a look at that historical. And so, you know, you might, I I just think things like that need to be factored in, but sometimes you can't put a price on that kind of thing. As we begin to lose that historical nature, this is one way to preserve that. So, you know, I think that needs to, you know, we just need to think about that too.
Some of the things we're talking about don't directly apply, I suppose, to the P O C D. But if all you do is limit our thinking to the P O C D, this proposal is full of things that you find in the P O C D. Okay? The economic thing is kind of a new notion we've been floating lately.
Yeah, Alan, I think that we rewrote that part of the P O C D relative to developments. I don't know if, did you intend it, you know, to apply to open space acquisitions?
I intended it to apply to anything where the town wrote a check.
Okay, got it.
I I have to agree with Alan. I I'd like to ask a couple of questions. First, I want to tell you that when I saw the presentation, my little heart went pitty patter because I have long, one of the reasons I joined the planning commission was to see if there was some way we could preserve those fields or some of that legacy of Martin Luther King. And so I'm very thankful that you're presenting this opportunity to us.
Holly, that's good because it's consistent with the P O C D. And remember, you know, we don't want to necessarily show prejudice here.
Well, that I will, I will cop to that prejudice because that was part of what guided my inputs to the P O C D.
Yeah, right. So yeah, this is the only referral that we're talking about. It's not, it's not an application. Okay, but, you know, let's be guided by the P O C D. That's our job.
Absolutely. I I think it's part and parcel, quite frankly.
I appreciate the presentation and our having some information and we know who to go to. This is wise, I think, to shop this around.
Hey, Alan, I don't think Honor gave you her email, though.
All right, I still have a couple of questions. My my first question is, how did this parcel come to the attention of the Trust for Public?
So, so I met with him probably last summer, I think it was, and we were just looking at Griffin's land holdings, knowing that the Trust for Public Land has, you know, a mission of protecting important spaces. And, you know, this this one came to light and, you know, caught our attention. And, you know, we we heard a little bit about the history of the property and the development and, you know, went from there and and from there, I, you know, sort of started talking to the town about it because we we were really attracted to, you know, the history and the open space and the connectivity and and all of that. And and that's when, you know, it sort of started gaining some momentum with with the town when it was presented to the Board of Selectmen.
So what you're saying is you were, you learned about it by looking at Griffin land holdings, what their various holdings were? Is that like how you normally identify your opportunities?
No.
Good for you. I have a question.
Oh, no, could I just finish my last, my second one?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Normally, when, when I've been involved in privately in some of these open space acquisitions, the Simsbury Land Trust is quite often involved in that and they partner with other groups. And I was quick, I wanted to know if you worked with them or if you have input from the Simsbury Land Trust on this. I think they'd be thrilled and certainly very interested.
Yeah, I've I've had a couple of conversations with folks. We are still very early on in this process. You know, we have to sort of get the town's blessing, you know, being that this is a, you know, $6 billion purchase and 2 million of it, you know, is, it would be coming from the town. This is sort of, you know, step one and and I have also been on leave for the last three months. But we definitely reach out to the land trust and see if there's, you know, a synergy, if we want to, you know, partner, if they want to, you know, sort of work with the town to to help out with stewarding. We explore all sorts of opportunities and definitely always, you know, involve the local land trust when appropriate. So conversations will be had. They just, you know, haven't.
Not yet.
We haven't, we haven't sort of dove in too deep yet on that end.
In one, I'm sorry, one last one. I've got the screen of the capital funding model, which is very impressive because you're showing a 2 million, a 2.2 million dollar investment yielding $6 million of of value. I see a sale of a private lot at 129 Holcombe Street. How did that person, how did that get involved?
The 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 work, the offsite work, which was performed at the intersection of Hoskins and 10202, it was done a few years ago, required some easements to be acquired in order to to widen the road and install a signal. And one of those easements happened to be with Mr. Antonio, who is actually the optionee. The lot that is under option actually abuts his home. And he is interested in buying that to expand his backyard. It's my understanding, just for open space and farming purposes himself. So in our bargaining for easements in order to do the required OSHDA work, the the offsite traffic improvements for the project, we entered into an option agreement where you'd have the ability to buy that lot. So that's, that's been something that's been on record for over a decade.
So I, can I have a turn or you're done, Holly?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, so Mike or Tim or whoever, outside of what the court put up in 2008, what they allowed, does Griffin Land have any other development opportunities on that property? I mean, could they do something else with it other than what the court decreed in 2008?
Well, it's owned single family, a single family residential zoning district. So the opportunities would be limited to what's allowed in the single family zoning districts.
So they could put up some some different kind of housing development if they want.
Right. Well, they had to go, if it was going to, if they wanted to put up something that was different than what was approved in 2008, we'd have to go through the whole process with the various commissions.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, Mike, I was looking at the referral letter from the Board of Selectmen. It says they're looking for a referral by July 7, 2020. Okay, so we we do have another meeting June 23, which would occur prior to that. What is the commissioner's desire here? Do we want to consider a referral tonight? Or want to take a little time to mull it over and we can debate it on the 23rd of June?
I'm ready to vote tonight.
Is there any chance that we could get a better look at the the net
Economic things?
Economics. Honor, is there, you mentioned you have analysts on your staff that can provide?
Yes, so what they would generally do is look at the sort of demographs, demographics of Simsbury. You know, I don't know what kind of like formulas they use, but essentially they do the cost benefit analysis and they say, okay, you know, if it's open space, it costs the taxpayers, you know, 15 cents an acre or whatever it is. And and generally, we've seen that open space costs less than developed property in in a town like Simsbury. But, you know, I I could ask them to put something together sort of preliminarily. You know, I don't know how how busy they are and if I would be able to get it to you by July 7, probably.
Yeah, we need it by June 23, Honor.
Oh, oh, by June 23.
Two weeks.
I can ask, certainly. And, you know, I'll, I just also want to say that, you know, the the Trust for Public Land has a big application to the Deep Open Space Grant Program that's due on July 1. And one of the important components of that grant application are letters of support from the various commissions. And so we would be asking the the planning commission to essentially, you know, bless a letter of support towards this application for open space and and essentially blessing the the town's acquisition and TPL's acquisition of this property. And and that's due July 1. So I will certainly be in contact with you guys moving forward, but just something to put on your radar in terms of decision making.
Yeah, I for one, with Holly, and would appreciate seeing that economic analysis of that if it could be done. So I think that's, maybe this is looking for more information upon which to make a decision.
I think I think we have a little bit of time here. So Honor, if you could, you know, take a, take a run at the analysts and see if they can come up with even some preliminary numbers for us to consider. And we we can take it up at our June 23 meeting.
I think also, Bill, in addition to that, I think I just want to read this stuff a little bit more.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Yeah, and I'm thinking about the the next item on our agenda too. The permit extension for Meadowwood. Does that have any bearing upon what you might think for the overall land acquisition? So I think I think it's safe to to wait till our next meeting. Okay? So I'm not expecting a motion here. I'm just, you know, we'll leave the discussion open. Mike, if you could put it on the agenda for our June 23 meeting?
Will do.
Yeah, and we will certainly take action that night.
Great, thank you.
All right, thanks, Honor. You're more than welcome to stay on, but I can, you know, understand if maybe you want to get back to your personal life.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay, so I think this rolls right into item number four, preliminary discussion, permit extension for Meadowwood. Mike, who starts the discussion? You or or Pat or Tim?
Tim, I'll turn it over to
Sorry, Tim, let me just kind of understand. This is just a preliminary discussion or? Okay.
This is a preliminary discussion, non-binding preliminary discussion.
Okay, understood.
All right, I guess Pat, Tim, it's all yours.
Thank you. I'll I'll start, Pat, and then turn it over to you. But just just quickly, as Honor had mentioned, you know, the genesis of this deal was really born out of other preservation efforts that Griffin has undertaken on other parcels of land elsewhere in Connecticut and even out of state. So we've had a relationship with the Trust for Public Land for a number of years. As well as the Department of Agriculture, we've done two transactions in Connecticut where we preserved hundreds of acres of land for farming in East Windsor and Southfield in particular. And so we do have experience in these types of transactions. And when the Trust for Public Land approached us with a thought of doing something like this for Meadowwood, we said, well, we're willing to listen and, you know, if you can put together a good, a good proposal and it makes some good business sense, then why not, why not make everybody a winner out of this? And lo and behold, they came up with a structure that worked for us. As she did mention, that, you know, our concern with that in getting in Um, as she did mention that, you know, our concern with that and in getting in into a transaction like this and one that's very time consuming, it, it does burn the clock down on our permits, which I'll let Pat uh, present that side. So that, that need for an extension or renewal of permits, um, however mechanically it might need be, i- is really just a, a man, a manner of, as Honor mentioned, preserving the value of the project. Uh, and, and the preserve, preservation of the value of the project is twofold. It's not only for our purposes, but it's also for the purposes of the Trust Press for Public Land and being able to secure the funding that they are seeking from the various sources based on the appraised value of the project. So um, it's not something that's really intended to be anything but um, a security blanket that this transaction goes forward and not just for Griffin, but for the trust as well and for the town for that matter. So with that, I'll pass it along uh, to Pat that can kind of go over um, I guess, the status for permits and, and how we feel uh, you know, mechanically how this has to happen.
Okay.
Thanks, good evening, everyone. Pat Naples with Shipman and Goodwin on behalf of Griffin. So I think Tim said it right and I think Honor said it right as well, which is our goal here, everyone's goal here um, among Griffin, TPL is to get this deal to close with respect to the plan laid out by Honor at the beginning of the meeting. Um, but we also have existing permits that are set to expire in March of 2022. And so from Griffin's standpoint, it's important that if something goes awry with the proposal laid out by Honor, that those, that those permits don't lapse. And so as of right now, we want to have this preliminary discussion as a way of introducing both this commission, the zoning commission, the conservation commission, because we've got site plan subdivision, wetlands permits for this particular development. Um, that if it looks as though, you know, in, in time that we need to seek renewals of those permits, that we may make those applications at that particular time. And given the amount that Griffin has expended in reliance on the existing permits, uh, we believe that we have a right, a vested right to those renewals. Um, so again, we just wanted to make sure in our initial discussion, preliminary discussion here that we were upfront with the planning commission and all of the commissions that, again, our goal is to see the deal through to conclusion. But that we would, we, we may be in a position where we have to apply for these renewals if the clock starts to run and we get close to that March of 2022 um, end date. Uh, and just on a final note, um, my colleague, Tim Hollister and I had a call with Town Attorney Dick Crescendo earlier today. And he understands our position, where we're coming from. And, and we had a discussion with him about that just in advance of this meeting. So just wanted to make sure that I relayed that to you as well. If you have any questions, you know, I'm happy to answer if, if it's more geared toward what Tim was saying. I'm sure that, you know, we'd be happy to have a discussion about that.
I see Mr. Bloomy with his hand up.
Uh, question to Tim, has Griffin established a tentative start date for the overall development?
Uh, no, we have not.
How about an elapsed time estimate of, if you start X, it will take X plus so many months?
Well, it, as you know, it's a very large project and it's presently phased in four or five different phases um, in which it could occur. Um, that's not to say that we, we couldn't propose doing it in, in different phasings. But uh, if you like, take a look at uh, what we have approved and the phasing plan for that. Um, I think everybody's taken a look at it, saying this is a very lengthy project to get, to, to be fully complete. Um, I think, uh, I believe even the Town Assessor and coming up with his evaluation is used a 10-year horizon in, in determining that. And I believe uh, the uh, the trust appraisal even uses that as the timeline for their analysis.
Is the overall uh, plan, uh, has it changed since the appeals court judge, um, since that judgment was made?
Uh, no, it, it actually, um, it can't without the agreement of the commissions to, to modify anything. I mean, what's, what's, what's set, uh, what's on record is, is this, is the result of the stipulated agreement that was entered in two years ago with uh, with the, with the, the town and the commissions. Um, so what, what is of record is what was presented to you tonight. Um, and what is being valued is, is what you've viewed tonight as well. Uh, what gets constructed going forward is really market driven. So um, you know, right now, uh, there seems to be a growing trend towards people liking, wanting to get into smaller homes. Um, I think the affordable home component is one that's really to be determined. I mean, I think, I think there's some affordable housing dwellings that are available now that don't seem to be absorbed, being absorbed in the market uh, very quickly. But um, you know, anybody that looks at this development is going to try to determine what, where the market demand is. And if things are inconsistent with the plan, then they would likely look to address the town and how it could be modified. But that's, again, that's something that's, uh, you know, not something by right, it's something, has to be approved.
Thank you.
So um, I, I guess, uh, I'll just throw this out to uh, Pat, Tim and Mike. Um, do I remember that uh, there was a, a request for an extension previously?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, and what, 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 was that like a seven-year extension or something?
It was to the max that was allowed under statute.
Right, which I think was 50% of the original permitted, you know, uh, time period, which I thought was 14 years.
We had, there was also, yeah, 14 years is correct because of uh, 2008 and the financial crisis then. Actually, uh, the state actually took some measures to extend existing permits then as well. So in, in total, it's been 14 years.
But is, is there currently an extension in, you know, in, uh, in existence?
We are, we are presently without any extension rights under the current permit. Mechanically, mechanically, um, you know, I'll, I'll let Pat address this point because this is something that is, is an important distinction to make. That um, the, the permits that we have are, are valid for renewal.
Yeah.
But I don't believe they can be extended and that, and there's a distinction between the two. So Pat, maybe you could delve into that.
Right, so the 14-year limit, right, is the outside limit as far as extensions are concerned. So what we would be seeking, again, if the deal doesn't go through, right, in order to preserve our rights as we have them now. Would be a renewal of the existing permits as they exist currently. Um, rather than an extension of the existing.
I see, okay, okay. Yeah, okay, so 2008 plus 14 is 2022, that, that's, that, that's the term, got it. Okay, no, I understand you, you're trying to protect your interest. You know, if uh, if, if the, if the TPL schedule doesn't pan out the way they expected and it goes a little bit longer, you want to make sure you still have, you know, the, the uh, the, the permits to perform the work that it's already been approved, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Mike, any, any, you know, what, what's, I know that the, this was an, uh, you know, unusually long uh, period of uh, until the permit just expired. You know, typically it's five years, I think, right? And, and this one was.
That could be extended to 10.
Right, five with, five plus five.
But as, as, as Tim kind of indicated, the General Assembly identified those projects that were had valid approvals around the, the 2008 crash, they were automatically extended. Um, I believe it was a, a nine-year approval. Um, with the ability to extend it, the permits out to 14 from the original approval date.
Okay, all right.
So.
So we're talking a renewal, not, not, not an extension.
That's correct, yeah, and, and Pat's correct, uh, you know, we had a meeting, must have been in February now, Bob, with Bob DeCrescenzo, Tim Hollister, Pat, uh, Tim, Tim Leskley. And we discussed this, how, you know, what are, what are the options to uh, you deal with the permit issue should these negotiations go south? Or that the funding, the grant funding does not come up in fairness to Griffin Land.
Sure.
And, you know, the, as staff and, and council, we are in agreement with their approach.
Okay, I think I understand it pretty well.
And, and we wanted this on your agenda, so it wasn't a surprise that, you know, let's say, let's say December, this December comes up and it looks like it's going to be a little longer and you're going to have those renewal permits. That way the, the commission is not blindsided by that renewal permit. That's why we're here tonight to have this preliminary discussion.
Yep, no, good, I appreciate it. Great, uh, commissioners, any, any questions?
No, I can see why they want an extension.
A renewal in this case.
Yeah, it, it makes sense.
Um, well, thank you, I, and I can't, um, I just like to underscore again that, you know, we, we've committed to do this transaction with the trust. And we think it's a, it's a, a, a good, good resolution for uh, for this project, uh, for everybody. Um, and, you know, as, as we stated, we just, everyone needs to make sure that they've, you know, are preserving their rights and value accordingly.
Yeah.
Um, but I appreciate your consideration for this and we look forward to meeting with the other land use commissions next week. And I think you might be aware that there were a couple of meetings last week as well with open space and the Historic District Commission. Um, I believe both of them have, may not have given the formal referrals, but it seemed to be that the feedback was very positive there, there as well. So um, if, if you'd like for us to come back on the 23rd, be happy to do that. Um, and uh, answer any other questions in later eyes.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll reserve that right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys, feel free to sign off.
You need a mo, you need a motion to adjourn?
Uh, no, we have more, we have more business, Dave.
Oh, sorry about that, I, oh, you meant for them to sign off, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's uh, let's just keep in mind, where's the 2.2 million coming from?
Yeah, it's in Alan's back pocket. Okay, then.
Sometimes, though, Alan, I think sometimes, well, anyway.
Sometimes, sometimes it's a good idea.
Projects might be worth it for a multitude of reasons, so it'd be interesting.
Just where's it coming from?
Well, but, and you both have a point, let's hope that we get some, the cost benefit analysis helps.
It does.
Yeah, we could see that, we could see the.
I don't mean to cut everyone off, but we, we kind of ended that conversation for two weeks.
Yeah.
All right.
Sorry.
We're going to move on, uh, go back to item number three, approval of minutes. So we have two meetings worth of minutes. If you remember at our last meeting, we, we reviewed the May 12th minutes. Uh, but unfortunately, we did not have sufficient votes to uh, actually carry the motion. So let me just go back and look at my, okay, so on May 12th, that was that crazy meeting, right? Where the timing was, was unclear. So um, we had two commissioners who arrived kind of late.
Fixed.
Okay, and they, they were uncomfortable uh, voting uh, for the motion on the minutes at our last meeting. So I offered a couple of solutions. Uh, first of all, moving it to this meeting for consideration. And then looking at the composition of the attendees tonight to see if we would have uh, sufficient uh, votes to, to carry it. Alternatively, I offered the option or made a suggestion that uh, that Holly and Aaron uh, could review the video of the uh, the portion of the meeting that they did not attend. So um, I'm looking at who's here tonight, so uh, Holly, Dave, Dave, you were there on the 12th.
I was.
Uh, Aaron, you were there, but uh, you know, just a little bit late. Uh, Craig was absent, he's not here tonight anyway. Alan, you were there and I were, I was there. So we have Dave, Bill and Alan so far. Uh.
I reviewed the, I reviewed the meeting, so I can.
Okay, okay, great, so that adds you to the list. Yeah, okay, let me just, you know, Julie, you were not at the 512 meeting, so unless you reviewed it, I was not going to ask you to vote, okay? Not, but it, it doesn't look like, uh, it, it, it appears that we won't need to do that anyway. Okay, so um.
Um, Bill, I, I must confess, I didn't.
Okay, then you, you can still abstain.
Do we have enough people still?
Yeah, yeah, we'll have enough.
Thank God, sorry.
Yeah, okay, so I'm not going to go through the uh, review of the minutes, we did that last time. We have the amendments in uh, you know, in the minutes from our last meeting. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 regular meeting as amended.
Second.
Okay, so Bill made the motion, o- okay, uh, actually, Aaron, could you just make the motion, okay?
So moved.
There we go, thank you. Aaron motion, would someone second it?
I'll second.
Holly seconds. Okay, all in favor of uh, approving the minutes of the Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 meeting uh, as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstained.
Okay, so Holly abstains.
And so does Julie.
And so does Julie, very good, okay. Okay, that gives us four aye votes, the motion carries. Very good, okay, now we can turn our attention to the minutes from the uh, 526 meeting.
Yep.
Which would have been the ones in our packet tonight. Okay, Alan, would you mind uh, rolling us through there?
Um, yeah, I didn't find anything when I went through, but let's see what other people find, page one.
All right, so I got, um, again, we have Ms. Bloome, uh, so.
Oh, that's a habit.
Okay, so now we're going to have.
Can I get my voice deeper a bit?
To the previous minutes. Uh, so both, both the, uh, you know, the, we should have a salutation of Mister and Bloome is spelled incorrectly. So that should be changed to B L U M E. That's all I had on that page.
Page two.
All right, this is very, very uh, ticky tacky, but on line 68, um, which was written by himself and Mr. Needham with this, uh, there should be a space between this and commissions and commissions should have an apostrophe before the S.
That's the same thing with 109 too, Bill.
With 109.
That's the next page.
Actually, there's a lot of spaces that should be between this and commission, commission and should.
Okay, so um, uh, I don't know if it's Mike or Amanda, uh, guys, please just go through it and look for the, the proper spacing, okay?
Okay, so we're done with page three then?
Yep.
Last page.
Um, you know what, I'm sorry, is pa, I, I don't have page numbers, um.
But give it some line.
Well, I, I, I just, um, starts at 111. It's, it's really awkwardly worded, I don't. Looking for further explanation and if so, what are looking for? I think there should be what are they looking for?
Okay, what are they, that's on line 112?
112.
We have it, okay, we got, are looking for twice.
Yeah, so I would say, it, it, so they can be given specific data or whatever. Yeah, you can take out what they are looking for again, but so they can be given specifics, maybe, is the way to.
That, that sounds like a good.
Okay, so on line 1. Okay, so on line 113, we'll change the word specifically to s- specifics and strike the rest of the sentence.
Yeah, and again, on the next line, Bill, 114.
Yep, there's a this commission, yep.
Yep.
So page four would be lines 152 to 192. I didn't have any comments there.
We done?
Okay, so I'll, uh, make a motion.
I think I found a correction to a correction.
Which one?
Back on page one, on line 3. I don't think it was supposed to be Mr. Bloom. I think it was supposed to be Ms. Bim.
Oh.
That was a, because I, I was, I extended, I, I, I.
Oh.
Ah.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, good catch.
Ms. Bim. So, yeah, it was, it was not that, not that flagrant after all. So line 36 is Ms. Bim.
But is that the proper spelling of McCormick?
McCormack, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, we're in M-A-C, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, then I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 26th, 2020 Planet Commission meeting, uh, as amended.
So moved.
And with a, sorry, a, a, a second request to go through and look for, um, proper spacing and punctuation.
So moved.
So actually, I made the motion that.
Oh, my God, I, I, I've screwed up twice tonight. Second.
Okay, you're going to second. Okay, good. So Bill made the motion. Aaron seconded.
I get so confused.
Any, any, uh, discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes from the 526, 2020 Planet Commission meeting as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to the, uh, point in our meeting where I generally ask Mr. Mike if there are any, uh, any correspondence or any, any items that we should be aware of.
No, I don't have anything else for you this evening.
Okay.
Bill, can I just ask, I know, um, last time, we, we had voted a while ago to have, is it one meeting in August?
Yeah, August 25th.
Oh, it's the end. Okay, that's what I thought, but, okay, thank you.
So that, that would be the second Tuesday of the month.
The fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry, fourth, yeah.
Okay.
Second meeting, fourth Tuesday.
Yeah, I think the thought was people would be back. It's close to the beginning of school or whatever. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, commissioners? Okay, someone want to do the, do the honors?
Aaron has her hand up.
Oh, okay, I, I put a motion to adjourn the meeting and I seconded.
Aaron made the motion to adjourn. Holly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.